Okay, let's get started today. This is the Hopkins and Planning Board for Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. I'd like to thank H. Cam for recording the meeting. We're missing a couple of members, I think, tonight, and that might be helpful so that they can review the meeting and perhaps vote on it if we miss, you know, when they missed. We just thank H. Cam for recording the meeting. From an agenda standpoint, we've got three public hearings and, I guess, continued public hearings. It's the main part of the meeting tonight. Two of the three are probably going to be continued again for various reasons. And the solar panel, I have a feeling that we can come to conclusion on that tonight. I'd like to thank, on behalf of the planning board, most of us, I think we're all at the party over this weekend. I think that the Hopkins and Three Hundredth Anniversary Celebration Committee did an outstanding job, and I'd like to thank, on our behalf, Jesus Bergson, Anthony Conan, I can't pronounce it, of course, my memory, I didn't, I'm sorry. Michelle Murdock, Scott Richardson, Craig Stanley, and then those are the members of the committee. Venus, Chair of that committee. Associate members were Ann Click and Eric Sonnet, and Ann Click also was the Chairman of Friends of the Hopkins and Anniversary Committee. From fireworks to a parade, I mean, it was outstanding with the fountain, or restart flow on Friday night. It was just a fantastic weekend in there, and Hopkins appreciated it, and I feel we all appreciate it. It's an event that brings the community together. Thank you again for all the celebrations.
It was worth waiting three hundred years for.
Yeah, I don't think I'll be around for the next six hundred, but I'm hoping to make it for the three twenty-five, but I probably won't be in the cake making business back. You know, no. Let's see. We may have one more member. I'm going to do one item before we get into the first public hearing. This is Hunter's Ridge subdivision's request to adjust the performance guarantee amount in at least eight lots. And we have two votes on that. One to accept or add to the performance guarantee of an amount of fifty-one thousand nine ninety-nine, which is the increase in the amount. So, yeah, and that's on the sheet for you. Is there any discussion further of that and questions? I drove through it today. It was pretty good.
Yeah, it's going on.
And in fact, if you're asking for eight lot releases, meaning it must be selling pretty well too, because you usually come in only one at a time, I know.
Things were slower, yeah, so they're selling, so it's going like it wants.
Great.
And it's time to connect everything and not help back, so we want to just increase everything and work the whole thing at once.
Okay. So, I'm looking for a motion to reduce fifty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars to the amount of performance guarantee for Hunter's Ridge. Move seconded for the discussions. See none as you vote. I, you are opposing or abstaining, motion carries. Next part of that is lot release for lots. You can read them. Go, please.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Okay. Looking for a motion to release a lot as a lane red there. Some moves?
Second.
Move seconded. Further discussion? See none. How do you vote? Aye. You want to oppose or you want to abstain, motion carries. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Oh, no, there's a form coming around. I think we need to use five. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I think at this point, we're ready to open the public hearing. On thirty-four forty Hayden Road Street, site plan review, RPI Hopkins and LLC has proposed parking lot modifications and stormwater management facilities. You know, I think Claire, who's in direct butter, is leaving the board. So, plan review, we need five votes, pass that, we have enough in place, so would the applicant come on down, and members of the team? Now, to kind of introduce us to the public, we have a hearing outline for those that haven't been part of our procedures, and hopefully, maybe you give, and basically, we're going to go through the outline and try to organize our thoughts in a way to get through the items. We have, I'm trying to give you a little bit more efficient way to get through a site plan review. We do entertain a public comment, both to add to the outline, where we'll, then we'll have detailed discussions at that point, and then there may be a summary before we vote, public comment type period. So, we hope to get through. We have about a half an hour scheduled for this tonight, today, and we will hopefully get through some parts of it, and I know there are some action items, I believe, regarding traffic, that we know we don't have everything here anyway today, and there are some items that we need to review. So, let's start off the outline with the project introduction and kind of a summary review of the project from the advocate.
Evening. Chairman of numbers employment, my name is Jerry Uppman. I'm an attorney with offices in Ashland, and I'm going to make a brief, under five-minute introduction before turning it over to the professionals. We're here incidental to a project which is at home to eliminate industrial warehouses in the so-called formerly named Hopkins Building, as a property address, and we're going to convert that space and some office space into a seven year, two bedroom condo. This change of use required, in addition to the review here, a non-performing use extension by a term on its own board of appeal. We concluded a series of hearings there on August twenty-sixth. The board voted to approve that change in a way that we considered. Well, the company that proposed modification for residential use, we hold as you indicated in this summary, the treatment, making some changes to the parking area, not to increase the parking area size.
Can you talk louder, because we're getting?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Why don't you shut the door, please, please? Thank you.
Okay. Well, the company proposed modification for the residential use, making some changes to the parking area, not to expand the footprint or to increase the amount of spaces, but to pave a portion of the previous land space, paved base, and to install a drainage system, including subsurface drainage components. In addition, we're going to be making and proposing certain changes to the exterior of building, the facade, the windows, and access doors, and landscaping, and in fact, those matters are subject to design review board approval and review. And in fact, simultaneous with the commencement of this hearing, we are appearing downstairs with a number of members of our team to kick off that hearing as well. We assume it will be completed, of course, and their recommendations will follow. We also recognize that this development seeking to add more than ten residential units triggers under Section two ten fifty-eight requirement of an affordable unit with the special permit process of, to this board. The developer is very close to making a determination of what measure of the open measures allowable, and we would like to satisfy that. We anticipate that that decision will be made, Michael, within the next week. We will then file the appropriate application. I pulled the new butters list, because mine will expire for about two days. We will attempt to coordinate the initial hearing under that with one of the continued sections before you, as you are the special permit planning authority. We just received yesterday the peer review report at the end of the day, and the staff was nice enough to get to us. We've had a chance to preliminarily review it today, and we feel that we can meet all of the matters that were raised by the peer reviewers, of course, with appropriate changes, modifications, and requests for additional information. And we anticipate that that process will obviously take a period of time. It is our goal to have that augmentation done, submitted to the peer reviewer for his reviewer, and hopefully back to you for time for you to review of the findings you leave, and surely have the committee again to talk about some of the matters that were set for that. So, with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Joe Markanoff, the senior project manager. Or I think it's time.
Evening, folks. Joe Markanoff here. We're joined by, at the facility owner from RPI Hopkins and, and Ron Yula, traffic engineer gave the review of the conditions around the site. Unfortunately, right now, in the basement, Peter Quinn, architect, and Mike Radner, landscape architect, with the other part, another half of our design team, they have changes with them at design review, and they have some of the landscape materials and the lighting information. So, hopefully, they definitely join us and go over some of those items again. But I'll start with what we have on our designs, and then move through that, of course, to make a great effort to work it out. I thought it might take a second just to acquaint you with the site. You may be familiar with it. As Jerry mentioned, we did have that hearing before the Board of Appeals regarding the use, and fleshed out a great many details. This is the site, two point three nine acre site, on the west side of Hayden Road Street. We also have frontage, a long church street to the west, and there are a couple of butters on the southerly side and along the northerly side. Maple Street is about two hundred feet southerly off the site. What we have is an existing parking configuration that was generated from a previous Board of Appeals ruling. What we have is an existing asphalt parking lot here, with parking spaces that provides the drop-off, pick-up and drop-off location for the daycare facility. As you know, we also have the professional office space and the warehouse light manufacturing in this facility now with various access points. There is a gravel parking lot here to the north and west, with some landscape plantings to break up that view as agreed upon in that previous filing. An awful lot of landscaping here along the church street side, the westerly side, as we closed up a couple of driveway openings, and I mentioned what was there, the new plantings about ten years ago, Jerry, when that last filing took place. So, we have some mature plantings in here along the westerly side. There are existing facilities, water, sewer, and gas from Hayden Road Street, and there is power on the west side from Church Street, and there is limited power telephone here on the northeast corner. Lawn, some mature trees, some low shrubs, and a couple of trees along the southerly side. There was some plantings off-site on the owner of the Cali property, what was two-way, and then there's some screening around the existing dumpster here. What we are proposing is to utilize that existing curb cut along Hayden Road Street. It's about forty-eight feet now. What we want to do is reduce it to twenty-four feet. So, take that width now, which is open pavement, concrete, and mixed materials, and drag that area in here, which is sidewalk, northerly, and landscape that area, adding a monument sign, and try to break up the viewscape along Hayden Road Street. But we will be accessing the same point that we access now of in the smaller space. What we hope to do is create a flow similar to what is there now. As Jerry mentioned a moment ago, our intent is really to formalize what has been an informal setting here with asphalt and berms and stormwater controls. So, we will continue a flow like this, two-way traffic here along the north, two-way in here, two-way here, but one-way heading in a southerly direction along the church street side. We will continue to allow folks the traditional drop-off space for the daycare. Folks like the opportunity to park here, walk their children down along the sidewalk, and enter the traditional location here. We're going to add some chewing spaces here. The Kids Borough daycare facility has a split program with younger children and young teens. So, there is a second means of access and access through here, an existing path. We're going to utilize that. That becomes a hard stop on the southerly side with our parking lot, right on top of the gravel that's there now, so that those children and parents can access Kids Borough as they do now. What we have with our park, our access scheme is the access to ninety-six parking spaces. We were permitted for a hundred and five with that previous filing. Given the uses that we have now, the residential, professional office, and the daycare, we need ninety-six spaces. So, we are right on the number with our spaces. We have a mix of traditional nine-by-eighteen and some compact car spaces and some hybrids along the westerly side of the building. The compact spaces will be here and here, traditional throughout the rest, and as I said, the hybrids into here. Because of the nature of the product that they want to introduce to the market, we're going to add an open covered parking area here, provide some protection to the spaces there. So, each of the unit owners will get a designated space under this carport, open at all sides with a roof. Seventeen spaces in this location here designated for the unit owners. As I said, daycare will utilize other portions of the site. Professional office will be mixed in, and then the other cars associated with the residential use throughout the parking area. So, that carport is generally in this location here. The access points are sprinkled throughout the building, having to do with the multi-use. There is a loading dock through here, there are doorways along Hayden Road Street, there's a doorway to the office warehouse space here on the northerly side, and the traditional professional office space here in that. We're going to change that up slightly and modify that. The residential component of the building will access through this location here, and as part and parcel of that is a handicap access ramp at this location here. So, new walkway to a handicap exit, handicap ramp with a switchback, new doorway, and then the traditional door that exists there now. There will also be an entrance way here to an upper level because of the configuration of the building. They'll be based in first and second floor units and part of the residential. So, we will be accessing here as well from the residential, and there is a walkway anticipated along that northerly side. The business center, professional office, is going to, as part of this proposal, give up the access here at this location, will be relocated to here. Doorway's now on the northerly side. We're going to switch it around to the easterly side, provide access from Hayden Road via walkway to that doorway. So, our access points for the professional office will now be here, residential will be here, here, and the daycare will stay the same in these three locations. There are some mechanical rooms, the power here in the northwest corner. That doorway will still allow access to that. But those doorways will still be in existence, but they won't be used as any element of the facility. This door here is the capable problem in that northwest corner. The surface will now be asphalt, remove from asphalt and gravel to completely paving the entire area. We have introduced some landscape areas inside the parking lots to break that up in the quarters for the regulations, and there's some screening for the northerly and southerly sides that Mike Radner has pulled together. We will burn the edges of the parking lot to direct our stormwater flows into a closed drainage system. We are mimicking what we have there, a raise on the site now, and lift up the center right about here, about five to six inches. So, we will have flows to the north and east and to the south. And our drainage system is set up to collect here at the southerly side, and then at different areas inside the satellite parking lots, and here along the north side, collect all that water. We are going to infiltrate our stormwater around the ground facility, the going pipe at this location that you see here. There will be an overflow that will be incorporated into the grass whales that we have along the northerly side, to a rain garden that will allow for infiltration of any overflow. We've also introduced a rain garden here on the southerly side to mitigate the impacts from the development, or this about here on the southerly side. The existing playground is here at this location. Kids Borough is a vibrant part of the facility and will remain so. So, that, unfortunately, I didn't do a great job highlighting, but that playground will stay in place and in use for Kids Borough going forward. Screening, as I said, and I, Mike Radner was kind enough to share his plan, though time would allow it, but it may be best suited, it might speak to his work, but we have screening. Some of the existing trees are lost here on the northerly side. Some are dead, and I don't think are salvageable, but there is landscaping proposed for the northerly side and the southerly side around our rain garden, which will have the low plants. So, we'll have the upper storied canopy for the trees, and then we'll have our rain gardens in these locations here. And then, we're going to maintain that westerly side, church street, with that screening that has come in quite well. I don't believe there's any augmentation of that westerly side. We are, as a result of the changes, the residential use being more intensive than the warehouse use, we will be increasing our demand for public water and sewer, in anticipation of that. We went to the Department of Public Works and get the approval for an increase to handle our demand with water and sewer. As Jerry mentioned, we received the permit from the Board of Appeals for the change of use. We have no environmentally sensitive areas, no wetlands, no rare species, so we have no other environmental reviews. And that's the general summary of what we're having.
Again, because of things.
Right. We'll go back to the architects if they come in.
We have our traffic person here. We're happy to have an overview of traffic. I think that should be helpful.
All right. I'm Ron Yula, traffic engineer on the project. I was tasked with identifying the change in traffic generation as a result of the reuse of the property, and I put this letter together that basically does exactly that. We counted the traffic in and out of the Hayden Road Business Center, both in the morning peak and the afternoon peak hours, to establish what the current traffic generation of that is, and then estimated the two things. One, if the building were reoccupied by right, in other words, the existing warehouse space that were reoccupied again, if it were the office space fully occupied, I believe there's only about eleven thousand square feet currently occupied, where it has a total of fifteen thousand square feet of space. And also, the Kids Borough daycare, at the time that we did the counts, had ninety-five children, ninety-five children at the facility. I believe they're now allowed to have a hundred and thirty children. So, if you take all of that into account, the full occupancy of the warehouse space for the office space and a hundred and thirty kids in the daycare center, you get to, I'm sure you have the numbers, but a hundred and fifty-nine total trips in the morning peak and a hundred and forty trips in the afternoon peak. If this building is reoccupied the way that they're proposing here, eliminating the warehouse space, reducing the office space, but putting in the seventeen condominium units and keeping the daycare center, it amounts to a reduction in traffic of about twenty-nine trips in the morning and about fifteen trips in the afternoon.
In the peak hours.
In the peak hours, correct. And obviously, over what's there today, if you simply compare what's there today with the proposal, it would be a slight increase in traffic. But you have to keep in mind that I believe the warehouse and office space could be reoccupied tomorrow, that a user came in without any permits by the town. So, and that is essentially the purpose of my letter. I did also review the site plan with respect to access. The reduction in the curb cut width, I think, is a very beneficial thing. The forty-eight foot curb cut right now is very confusing, or can be confusing to people who don't know it, because you have people going in and out of the daycare center on one half of that access drive, and the people in the back, the back parking lots, on the other half of that. So, you have entering and exiting traffic in a very confusing way right now. So, reducing that twenty-four foot width makes it clear exactly where the entrance and the exit are. It also provides, I believe, some added parking for the daycare center as well. Site lines are more than adequate. Again, that, those things aren't really in the letter, because I was tasked with those things, but it's just something that I always take a look at and make sure there aren't any safety issues. There's more than adequate site lines in both directions there, so I'll wish you there. And I'll answer any questions.
In the details for the time, but. No, if we're giving. I'll slide additions from Ron. I don't know if Ron got the hearing.
Oh, yeah. That's right. I would take that. Thank you for, thanks, Jerry. I did get a chance to review Beta's report. They, basically, their only comment on my letter was that they believe that the numbers that are shown on the table did not reflect the third generation worksheets that were attached to the letter. They were actually, that's actually incorrect. They do match exactly, and I believe the difference lies in, for the office use, the trip rates that I used. This gets a little bit complicated and technical, but I did prepare a response letter to that that'll be submitted shortly. I'm sure when, once Beta takes a look at that, they will concur with our findings.
And from a traffic standpoint, we still need a, the traffic study, I think, definitely outstanding. You can correct.
The traffic study was part of the submissions already. It was reviewed, and I think Ron discussed one of the rights deficiencies. The other comment that I noticed, as a non-professional in the area, was your recommendation for some increased signage, which, of course, will be accommodated.
I think you had indicated before that the traffic towns were likely to be taken again after school, isn't that?
That's correct.
And we can do that, but the traffic generation, since the existing, the real comparison is what could the site generate with the current uses that are there, and what could the site generate it based on what this proposal reflects? And both use the same standard, the ITE third generation manual. So, performing the new counts, I don't think would really change the results of that, because not all of the uses today are occupied. So, we still have to use the ITE, the same numbers that are in this letter to project full occupancy.
If I may, for the chair, I think the point is, though, that during school session, the pattern for daycare is different than it is in summer, so there would be more of a need for the after-school traffic that's a completely different thing you haven't included in your current count.
Yeah, but again, Mike, my point.
It's just more, it's adding more to what you have, so I don't see it there. So, if it's not there, it's not counted.
Well, I mean, we can count it, but like I said, but I don't.
I think everyone that lives in this neighborhood would like to know how much additional traffic there is with your projections, with including the traffic over the regular school year. On that event, that's what we're asking.
Yeah. I think you probably have half of that data from the report you've done at the library, too.
Well, we didn't do the counts at that, at the Hayden Road Business Center.
Okay. Right. But I thought that that was one of the reasons why we were having to do this. That's why I'm asking this question.
See, I just don't think it's, I mean, I can provide the information, but I just don't think it's really going to change the conclusions of the letter because we're still comparing what could be there versus what else could be there. Because even though the Kids Borough daycare center has more kids now, the warehouse base and not all of the office space are occupied, so...
Do that in a little bit...
Yes, Data.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, just for the record, Phil Paris of David, we've been reviewing this project. I talked to him at my traffic coordinator and he, I thought he checked the dates of when that was taken, but maybe he kept it on year terms, a week off, that was on vacation week. That was at the library, I think. April?
That was at the library, I believe.
Oh. Sorry.
No, these counts, these counts were done on April 16th.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it was not vacation week then. The only difference being is that they only had 95 kids then and they have presumably up to 130 kids now. So that would be the only difference. It's not a matter that school wouldn't be sessioned.
Okay. And I don't know how long the building has been underutilized or, you know, under. So I understand the answer, the comparison between what could be there and what they're proposing, but I think for the folks of residents, they're going to want to know how many additional cars. So I'm not, I'm not optimistic on the density of the building.
Okay, let's move on to the next item. We're going to be about another five minutes or so before we can start the late...
Before we do a kind of point of clarification, earlier we heard that the meeting that was approved was August 26th. Is that correct? Was it July 27th or August 24th? The zoning board approved?
Okay. I've always pointed to it. Okay. I know we'll check when we're ready. And the decision is not yet on, or filed, now.
All the way.
The only other things I wanted to highlight was just that the Board of Appeals decision is pending and that should be filed because that is what the town council is trying to do. Also, that the zoning board's meeting's late, which we didn't mention at all. The other thing I wanted to mention was one of the standards requires a sidewalk on all the streets surrounding the property. And on Church Street, the sidewalk's on the opposite side of the street. So the plan does not show a sidewalk in front of this property, but the board has the ability to take special consideration for other circumstances. So that's one thing the board needs to discuss before it makes a decision is whether it will require a sidewalk on the side of Church Street or not. And the other thing, just in looking at the plan, and I don't know how easy it would be to create some kind of pedestrian connection in some way to let the residents or other people using the site to walk Church Street rather than going through the bushes. There may be a spot in the corner up here, just whether it's some kind of path or flagstones or something that, you know, makes it more of a formal way to walk away Church Street and downtown, so that it gets that piece connected. But the sidewalk is on the opposite side, so that's part of the discussion.
Okay. Yeah. Phil, do you have any other comments you want to leave with?
No, I think pedestrian access, emergency access around the parking lot, if vehicles... I want them to consider additional options for that drain outlet, possibly reuse it. And obviously, some details from Gray Guide.
As I think most of your engineers have worked with our engineer, we encourage that in between sessions. And if you get back a clean comment letter from them, always good. It makes it a lot easier. Most of us don't quite understand all the rain gardens as well as we might should be with our experts in that area. We are very shortly running out of time for today. And what I'd like to do is add quickly to the outline, and we'll do this more detail the next time, but I wanted you to be able to get a little prepared for a couple other items to the outline. There's the other item, five, as Elaine said, the Church Street sidewalk, pedestrian connection to Church Street, design review comments, and then just the ZVA decision. I think that just kind of fills out the normal stuff that we do with traffic and parking lot design, et cetera. I think we've got everything else covered, nothing else. We'll open that up and start with that on the next board. But if there's anything to be planned, we are starting to eat into our next couple of appearances tonight.
As far as scheduling, we had a very brief discussion with Elaine and with Joe about making sure exactly what you said happens as far as getting comments back, plan revision, getting it digested, and getting you, if not a clean letter, certainly substantive letters moving forward. We would ask for October 5th.
Time up. 7:30, 7:30, October 5th, and we'll probably at least schedule a ten-hour, at least, length of length to get going. So we confirm motion to the public hearing, so the 5th of October, 7:30. Second? Second for the discussion. I agree. I think the same motion carries. Okay. Thank you. All right. Solar folks, let's let some sun shine. This is the continued public hearings, East Main Street Commercial Solar Photovoltaic special permit application and stormwater management permit application for Marathon Solar LLC. Since they propose three plus or minus megawatt commercial solar photovoltaic installation of approximately 15 acres of land on East Main Street. So this is, what, a third hearing or fourth hearing? Or it seems like also, or I'm sure. Why don't we start with changes you've made to the plans since you met about a month ago on this?
Thank you all for having us again. And I think the first thing I'd like to say is that we've had a terrific rapport with the Parks and Rec Commission and the Point Six Point Two Foundation. And last night, that culminated in an unanimous vote of support for approval of the litigation, visual impact litigation from the Parks and Rec Commission, which you're probably aware of, but I just wanted to make sure that you were fully aware of that. And part of that is reflected in the grant set of conditions that you'll see tonight or if you ever, if you're going to see them. I'll just point out on the plan, the several sort of physical changes that were made as part of that. In part, we have requested that we leave the hedgerow to go back and around the eastern side of the pond so that ultimately, when this is parkland use and presumably Marathon Center, too, they'll have a more scenic sort of vista of the pond and the sort of stream system here. So we happily did that to accommodate them. We've also introduced a band of what would be 50-foot wide evergreen buffer zone in between here. There's already a very significant vegetated buffer, three mixed deciduous evergreen buffer between the road and here, and you can't actually see from the road into the site, but just as a precaution, we're going to be planting evergreens in that area, which is basically from here all along here. And that will be maintained during the lifetime of the project as well. And that's also in the conditions that you have there, and we'll have to maintain it to good health. So those are the sort of major physical changes. The other thing that you may or may not have heard, I guess, is the Conservation Commission did approve the project fully sometime late August or at this point. And so that was a huge step in the process as well. So we're grateful to everybody for their cooperation, and I think I'll let you ask as many questions that you have. And Eric is here as well from the Parks and Rec Commission.
Questions from the board member?
And you asked, Chairman, and this might be directed toward a number of members from Parks and Rec who's here. What changes occurred and what would you bring to specifically with Parks and Rec as something that's going to be documented and...
Sure. Thanks for asking. It's actually reflected in several of the conditions here, but I can point to the ones that are sort of most important. You'll see there's an $80,000 allotment for future screening of any buildings that will be built on the Parks and Rec site or the Marathon Center there next door, near the solar. And so that's to be used at Parks and Rec's discretion to pretty adequate screening. There's also the movement of the hedgerow that I just mentioned and the evergreen buffer mentioned. And then in addition to that, there's the last condition on the list, number 21, I believe it is, just gives the Parks and Rec an opportunity to come back out. This is the site to make sure that the screening is adequate. You know, if there's some additional shrubs or trees that need to be added, then there's a sort of a chance to, you know, update that. So those are, I think, literally everything. Can you think of anything, Eric?
Well, let me just say that since our last meeting, Parks and Rec asked Foreman Richardson, specifically Scott Richardson, to work with Rick and his people to come up with a topographical view of the site, how it looked from a Parks and Rec standpoint, and what would be necessary if a museum for the marathon was built there. Essentially, Scott made many recommendations, not the least of which was the way the hedgerow goes around the pond and what have you. And Rick and his people literally agreed and incorporated every recommendation that Scott had. That took us to the area of what if it isn't good enough? And we added two things. You remember at the inception, $15,000 was to be allocated to make up for any deficiencies. Well, that's grown since the last meeting to 80,000. And we feel that at this point, that's adequate. We also want to lock it six months after the completion of the project. And if that were in the middle of February, we would delay it until following spring or whatever, we could get a good look at it. We're very pleased with the cooperation we've had with Rick and his people. And as he said, Parks and Rec last night voted unanimously that assuming that you incorporate all the five or six conditions we have, we'll be supporting the project.
Could I just add, Mr. Swan, it's saying 80,000. Our memo says 50,000.
There's a new one right in front of you there.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. So what is it?
It's got a few other changes.
Well, we improved a 25-foot buffer zone to 50 feet. You know, but the key here is that Scott Richardson's recommendations were totally incorporated. And there's enough flexibility that if it doesn't do the job, we can address it. So based on that, we...
I appreciate your time and working together with Parks and Rec. One other follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. Was there anything from the board to select? As soon as I recall...
They were going to have some more discussion this evening later on. The word that I was hearing from them informally was that if Parks and Rec was happy, then they're okay. They've invited me to their meeting, and I'm going to tell them what I've just told you.
Thanks once again, Greg.
And I noticed in the terms and conditions, they've been revised. Players concerned about the pond is back into the final version. They've been talking, I guess, the last couple meetings about terms and conditions. Does anyone have other questions from the board before I open it up to the public on the decision? Okay. Is there any public comment on terms and conditions for the solar body support? They've been going through it for a long time now, I guess. Jane?
I apologize for being late to this whole process. A neighbor and interested, and probably my question might be to Parks and Rec as well. Being a member of the Product Trail Committee and frequent visitor to the existing properties, I'm just, I'm pretty sure that trails have been considered and pathways and usability after the shrubbery and all that.
We've always, always considered them on the town side of the line. You know, this is solely on Roger's side of the line, and we have not really talked about it.
And one quick question. Okay, so I guess that...
Essentially, the trail would be on the town property and go north into the legacy harvest property and sort of skirt around.
Sure.
And that's, I think that's already been engineered.
Okay.
The only other thing that we talked briefly about potentially is Roy working with Roger to try to continue the East Main Street sidewalk all the way over to Church Street.
That would be wonderful. And then secondly, the fencing around the solar property. Where is that supposed to start? Just like a...
Why don't you just show it for Jane on the map where the fences go up there?
It's a little hard to see, but this is regular Main Street, I think. You were across the street?
Yes.
Yeah. And this is the access road. There'll be no fencing around the access road.
Okay.
The fencing's actually way up in here. Here. Or rather, this way or this way?
I think it'll go around to this right here.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't know what kind of access you might need, but there's certainly, there are some paths that go here and ways around, and you can probably see ways around this way as well. Should be ample space to get around.
No, just in my sense, like, you know, my neighbor has always been wonderful and very generous. Super compassionate about a neighbor. And I think of all of the projects that could have gone in, I think, this is really one of the projects, especially the solar project.
I mean, there's public... None. I think we are, because it's down by my notes, ready to take some votes, wait?
I wanted to know if Frank can watch the video of it, why he needs to...
Mm-hmm. Okay, first vote we need to take is that finding the approval criteria 1, 2, 4 have been met. 1, 2, 4 are in the Lanes Memo, refers to our bylaw. Not to detrimental to the neighborhood of the town, environmental features in the sites surrounding areas protected. Already with general purposes and intent of bylaw. So we need one motion for that, and then we vote to approve as the second motion. So I'll summon.
Second.
Seconded. So this is a vote on the finding the approval criteria 1, 2, 4 have been met. Further discussion? Standing in, I think we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And when opposed and when abstained, motion carries. Okay, the second vote we need to is to approve with conditions. And the conditions that we're talking about are in the Lanes Memo of tonight, which are 1, 2, 21, which you see all those.
Yeah.
Okay. If you're nodding yes.
Okay.
So we're looking for a motion to approve with these conditions.
So move.
Second.
Seconded. Further discussion? Standing in, you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And when opposed and when abstained, motion carries. So that's the first of the two permits done. The second one has to do with the stormwater permit. There was 10 standards that were conveyed that they all met. And basically, I think we only need one vote, which is that the vote that the approved plan meets standards in Section 7 and approve with conditions for the stormwater permit. And there are in the Lanes Memo, conditions 1 through 8. This is on page 11, 12, 13. Okay. And I can't move to approve the D.C. standards and approve with conditions in the Lanes Memo. Someone second. Approve the seconded. Further discussion? Standing in, I think you're ready for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And when opposed and when abstained, motion carries. Okay. I think that is it. I think you crossed the line. It all starts here, but sometimes we don't finish here.
I just wanted to thank everybody for your cooperation. We really appreciate it. It's been great work. We look forward to a closer relationship. Thanks for doing so much.
Good luck.
Good luck, your board.
Thank you.
Move the question here in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And when opposed and when abstained, motion carries. Okay, so we are, it's getting to be right out of time, but let's take, we have a couple more minutes before the library. Let's take 203 Pond Street. I think, come on down to.
Mitri, right? Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Mitri Dej, president of Diamond Builders, also a general contractor at 203 Pond Street subdivision, also known as Fox Hollow. One year ago, this month actually, last year, the project was approved for a 12 parcel, the 12 single-family home subdivision. Project went to a 61A, and it was finally started in late May of this past year. We ran into a slight delay based on the approved plan with the DPW, the Department of Highway, with the water main that was approved. And as most of you remember, there's a culvert crossing that's approved on Fox Hollow Road, and the way the water main was designed was caught later on by the Department of Public Works. It was placed below the culvert, and they opposed it. So we went through several revisions over a couple of months, but we're at it now. The road has been, those of you who have driven by, the road has been clear cut. There's, and the cut and fill is more or less complete. We do have some blasting happening going there now, but most of the drainage now at this point has been installed, and we are working on the water main, which has already been tapped by the town. With the slight delay, it looks like we're going to be at position of laying down preliminary binder, asphalt binder on the road sometime in late October to early November of this year. I am here before you today asking for relief for the opportunity to start construction on one model home prior to generally, based on the bylaw, the base binder must be laid down to define some sort of road completion condition before any permits are released for any single-family homes to be constructed on the new road. I am here to ask for relief for the opportunity to start construction of one model, single-family home, and the opportunity to install two foundations only, so foundation-only permits for two other parcels on that road as well. And that's strictly looking down, looking down the barrel of winter approaching quickly, just looking to do the heavy legwork, the work that's generally opposed in that timeframe's a little bit more challenging in that timeframe, looking to just get a head start on that right now. That's it. Anybody have any questions? Anybody?
Can you give us the history of the president? Some of the board members' faces, as you know, which, what have we done?
It's generally been the preference of the town that building permits are issued for homes when the binder is in place, when there's access for emergency vehicles and so forth in the site. There isn't dirt, potentially muddy, and cloudy and so forth. So that's why it's the preference of the town for there to be binder. The lots could be released without it, but the performance guarantee has to reflect the amount of the main work, so it will be quite high if somebody puts up a monetary bond that obviously has more work involved, including removal of the house that's there and construction, I mean, part of the road. So I'm not sure exactly what you're asking for, other than the model home. The board cannot release lots without, from the conditional agreement, without varying the form of surety. So there needs to be some monetary bond provided if you're releasing lots and the work is not completed. So there has to be some monetary consideration. But it could be just, it could be maybe the smallest lot, the lot that's closest to Pond Street, and perhaps, you know, some phases, and perhaps that's where you'd want it first.
Lot that is Pond Street before or after the bridge?
Well, after the bridge.
I'll tell you, I joined the site today. I remember one developer saying that in order to make a home, you gotta break some eggs. We've got some Legacy Farms discussion. Right now, it's a lot of broken eggs. There's a lot of work to get it, I think, to the binder area, whatever. I'm not so sure I feel terribly comfortable with it. Besides the house, I mean, it's cleared, and there's some stuff there, but there's, you know, there's no bridge, there's no, there's a lot of stuff there. I mean, you're working on the two houses, the front Pond Streets, and, you know, you started off, assuming you've sold those off. I don't know. You know what you normally do. Claire?
I haven't heard this model home request before. I was worried about precedent. And every new development coming in, you're going to want a model home, and you're not going to want to have to do the preparation and the performance stuff that guarantees the town that if the worst case happens and, you know, the thing doesn't get built, the town's not stuck with it. I don't understand all the details involved, but I can understand maybe not having to bond the entire, you know, pay for the entire roadway, but I would certainly think that whatever is required to provide adequate access to the home model or whatever that's built, that should not, that should be provided, because if something happens and it's just the house and the foundation and the road doesn't get built, again, the town's going to, some of them are responsible for building that. So I don't want to set a precedent. I could see doing something partial to accommodate the need, but.
We approve partial money or cul-de-sacs. You know, you would have to be on the bridge.
You could do a phase in.
Do a phase in. You know, you're like the cable all the way out to the end, but we've done that in the past. I think we've included an amount where another cul-de-sac in, I'll say lesser than that. But what I understand, our purchase and sale, the town says, you know, Mr. Coolidge owns a lot of lots, you know. Same purchase and sale, but with the town, so, you know, there's what, you know, what the security or, you know, from that is a little lax. But that's just my, you know, everyone else chiming in, please.
I agree with Claire. I mean, I think that, you know, if you're going to put a home, call it a model home, you need to have, you know, the instructor, you know, to get there just for the safety so we can get emergency vehicles to it if we need to.
When is Mr. Coolidge going to leave the house?
He's planning on, on before Thanksgiving. So we've actually created, much of what you see is actually, is not a distressed situation with lots of scrambled eggs. It's actually a, we've actually created somewhat an island for his home and his well to basically function and still maintain occupancy on the home and doing our best to work around him. So we literally have heavy machinery on the left side of his house and the right side of his house, and unfortunately, until he moves, we cannot, we cannot complete the road working from the cul-de-sac out strictly for that reason, the home is a partial to the completion of the road.
So you're kind of on hold, right?
Well, theoretically, yes.
There's a lot of work that's still going on. I mean, it's.
What about foundation-only permits? There's no physical structure created other than the concrete, and again, just for winter conditions, just to continue the excavation that's continuing there, and we would just leave it at that until the binder is fully down?
Well, a foundation permit is a building permit, and so the covenant prevents the issuance of foundation permits because it's a building permit unless the board releases the lots.
I accept that to your needs, but we need to protect the town, and I don't want to see this model home thing continuing to happen.
We think the model home situation that Lacy Park had thought.
Yeah, we have to.
That's like a sales model, or their office.
Well, that's a trailer.
That's a condominium. The roads were bonded.
But the roads were all in place before they started building any foundations?
I agree with what Claire said about the whole thing, though. And I think if you do have population, it's kind of a risk. We've grown up, and they started building houses, and it stopped, and then you're a kid joining up, you know, the population, it's kind of a risk.
I don't like the idea of wanting to buy a house with foundation, build up to like to one of all. No, I think that's a little bit, a little bit, keep working on that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open the continued public hearing for 13 Main Street and 9 Tred Street. This is site design review and an application for a lot site, parking, this is kind of Hockington, this is the public library.
I just want to delay it one minute for you, and our plan is strictly this way.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get to A and R Plan first. This is 3 and 5 trial path? Everybody in trialing is explaining it quickly, and we'll really go through it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to the board. Before you change the lot lines between blocks number 2 and lot number 3 on trial path, it requires the swapping of about 140 square feet, equal parcels from one to the other to create an easier access to the driveway and to the lot.
Need all the requirements? Any questions?
This parcel here from lot number 2 in exchange for this parcel here. Square anyway. If there's a common driver, it's not here. It requires me, use your access into the lot and create a lot, eliminate it. We got right now, so. On the lot number 1, for short access to that. Lot number 8, 9, 10, 11, 12.
We want the motion to approve. We want our motion to sign.
Second.
Will be seconded. Ready to go vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And when opposed and when abstained, motion carries. Okay, we need two signatures and a date. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm going to wait just a second until John comes back. You guys get set up to go.
All right.
Soon as John comes back, we'll get started here. As our last public hearing tonight, we need probably 15 minutes towards the end, so our stop is about 8:45.
What we were thinking is, when we left, talked last time, there was a number of technical issues with data. We had our engineer talk the data, and I think we've come to some consensus on that. If we can go over those first and then continue down the list that we had last time, we didn't put any others.
Get your hand up.
Yeah, we get down that.
Don't lose his eligibility to vote. Okay, so now we'll restart the continued public hearing for 13 Main Street, 9 Tred Street, site design review, and shared off-street parking, special permit application to Hockton for 8, issued to our public library. for Hockington for rate, issued to our public library. So, what we started, Dan, with talking about...
Yeah, we've had our consulting engineer talk with your engineer to go over the technical issues. Well, I think if we can get that stuff out of the way, it makes us very comfortable. I have some consensus on that. So if you want to, if you want to just go over that and then...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members to the record. Jim DeValise, National Civil Engineer, DeValise, Virginia. So we were here about a month ago, and following that, we heard the, we've received the comments from Beta, resubmitted a full set of plans, got some more comments last week, the beginning of this week, on some of the technical stuff that needed more clarification. So I think we're at the point now, I just, I'll explain some of the substantive changes.
One second. Elaine, did we get formally a copy of this, the set of plans? Because I didn't see any of it.
Can you see them electronically today?
Today. Okay, so none of the board members have seen the latest version of the plans. There's a problem. And, you know, we need to work on getting this...
Well, let's go, let's go over the changes.
We'll get the changes, sure. But, I mean, you know, it looks like we had them well in time to get them here. Somebody, I don't know, working the town is, so it's your committee or some town official, but we need to get stuff in a timely manner so that a lot of us can read it over the weekend when we were looking at fireworks and parades. Okay.
Well, let's go over it. Sure. See how complicated it is.
So, um, this is similar to the colored render you saw at the last meeting. And so this is the set, and I can quote up additional detail, but basically some of the changes that you'll see looking down in the comments, stuff from this way back. This entire sidewalk now is going to be replaced. Before, we had different pieces going in and out. One of the comments was, you know, take a look at all the broken sidewalks. So that's new. We updated this area here where that, that landing and that accessibility needs to be worked on. The last plan had, we were fighting grades between to get from here down to here and then up to these different platforms at five percent or less. So there's no ramps and railings, uh, for the historic commission. So we took this and moved it up to here, which the historic commission saw. So this is, this is new. The landscaping's all new, mostly shrubs and as you go through the walkway.
The ramps, the historic commission's happy?
Should say ramps, walkways.
Walkway, they're now happy?
I think this goes back to what they initially saw.
I'm on the district commission. Can you just clarify, is that plan that we, that the district commission approved in your certificate in June, or are you saying this is a change?
This, uh, fellow Brian Johnson Roberts Associates, I was at the historic district commission. Well, we showed the historic district commission was a triple switchback stair that also picked up, I'm sorry, walkway that also picked up the exit from the, from the old church. Essentially, this thing does the same. The difference between what, what you're seeing tonight and what you saw last time was a section of, of walkway that came over onto the opposite side of our stairway. And we've eliminated that. So this is very similar to what, what the HTC saw approved.
But it's not what the HTC approved in this change.
The engineering is a different order to make those grades there. That's right.
I'm not saying that that's going to be a problem. I'm just saying that what's, what's in the certificate that the district commission approved is what either needs to be built or else they need to go back and get the change approved. And it may be a fine change, but a change can't just get built without the district oversight.
No, I understand. It's not a substantive change of what was, what was shown and approved by the board.
But it is changed from what was approved.
I can, I can go back and double check what the differences are. I can certainly make that difference.
Claire, does this trigger some relook at design review board?
Um, the design review didn't really do too much with it. They pretty much deferred to the district commission because it requires certification from the district commission. But it certainly does require the district to at least take a look at it. It gets a change from what was approved in the June thirti, uh, June eighteenth hearing.
I have to do the third of that one back there.
Probably small, but, you know.
Go ahead. Uh, moving up here, the bike rack, which is over here, I'm sorry, the old item over here. I made provisions for a bike rack. The parking, number of spaces, fencing, landscaping, all stayed the same. This was a tree that the tree warden commented on that is worth saving. And we had shown it saving, but that's, then there was a couple stumps over here that we thought could save, and the rest of those stumps, so. Some comments on the landscaping, on the type and durability, so we changed those out, but the numbers stayed the same. Things that you don't see on this plan, like erosion and center control plan, initially we did not do one because it's such a tight, tight site and with all the construction around there. We put silksacks in the catch bases, but Beta had asked to have one, so we provided that. Probably the, the change, you can see in great gray area, in this area, that's the existing house that's there now. So we did test it right along the side. The yield is good, soil results, fast soils. The overlaying soil in this area is a poor soil, so the comments that we received back from Beta was even though we show a perk test with a fast grade, the rest of the soils is poor. So if we look at increasing the system to accommodate the actual soils that are up there. So as up, up until this afternoon, we reran the numbers with the Cornell method with the slower soil and then emailed that back to Beta this afternoon. It requires some additional piping still within this area, no extra structures, so that's a detail that's not on that plan, but will be accommodated going forward. And then the Beta, when we responded back to Beta, they sent comments back, and I think everything was addressed except for, I just pulled out some stuff. There's a sign here, existing sign, it's in an area where it can remain. It's not like a small detail, but not proposing to move it. So if the town wants to move it, we'd have to come back to the plan, or something like that as a comment. There's a subdivision line that comes down through to separate it. There's a question of, has that been subdivided? The project most likely will subdivide it after with a Form A, asking for additional...
Oh, if we subdivide it, we're going to be combining...
Combining into one big lot, yeah. The off-street parking, some further discussion on that or some information on where the off-street parking is going to go. Clarification that the pipes are going to be, uh, HDPE, and etc. concrete pipes. Still requesting some erosion control, some hay bales around here, which we can certainly do if that's what we're going with it. And then some additional notes for the public safety measures during construction. So there's nothing, Beta's been very good to work with, very accommodating. We spent a lot of time trying to re-engineer this, so we didn't get comments until the middle of last week. So they were very responsive. It's just between August, the redesign and getting it back, we struggled a little bit. So I can, I can safely say that the comments that we received from Beta can all be addressed on the plan, and I consider them pretty much the details that are left at this point.
Yeah, I mean, we've here much, we've got several, so if we've all gotten it, in front of us today, most wouldn't say it should resolve, because that's what we have to, right here. Claire?
Can you just clarify, you said something about some change for handicap access being made in that bottom corner, the corner on Church Street and Main, where there's the old granite wall. What, what did you do with that?
Yeah, it's not, it's, the exact, it's sitting over the existing sign one. If you come down here, we're just basically taking this conform with handicap accessible so someone can get from the curb up in both directions in Apex, beyond the street, from the streets. Yeah, nothing to do with walls. This is, this is the existing sidewalk. Replacing it with a...
Okay, so you're not breaking through the granite wall?
No, 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 no.
That's no issue.
Not that we actually wanted to do that. We kind of responded to Beta's thing, but it's kind of that, there's a question of library part, we'd have to pick up Tom's sidewalk, Terry Tom's sidewalk. It really should be a DPDW.
Well, you know, Dan, I, I'm not so sure that you necessarily have to do the Main Street sidewalk, in my opinion, because within a couple of years, I mean, unless it's truly unsafe, but they're going to be relaying out that whole curb and the whole...
No, that's probably, we're probably going to destroy the Church Street sidewalk, church construction.
Yes, you've got water and sewer coming out there.
Yeah. But rebuilding the Main Street sidewalk and trying to make that into a handicap accessible could, could get complicated and expensive. So I'm not sure why, why it has to be a library, it's not a Tom's sidewalk.
It's a little bit...
Yeah. Library has a limited budget where the town has a bit more money in the project. Would that be, be that worth anything?
You know, you might, you might want to do the corner with the handicap, but that's not, not a bad idea. Particularly, right now, your application talks about off-site parking across the street. And I just want to get from there to there without, you know, in that situation. But, anyway, so let's, uh...
I have another question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Handicap access. I thought the main point of the entrance way on Church Street was for handicap access, and then I'm kind of confused why the path was needed in front. If I missed that point earlier.
Basically, all doors that an able person can get in and out, handicap people need to get in and out, even though it's not the main door, so...
Well, I think maybe the answer is that the Main Street door is used, if you just want to use the auditorium as a standalone from the rest of the library. You want to use the meeting room.
We just remodeled the town hall. We don't have that here. A lot of our schools don't have every door that's like that, so I'm kind of confused by that.
I answered a question, Phil Brian again. The handicap code has different requirements for existing buildings that you're renovating and new buildings, and it depends, when you have an existing building, how much work you do inside a building. We are over the limit in this building, and so we need to be full compliance with the handicap code and the building code. And what that means is all entrances, as Jim said, that are accessible to public need to be accessible to all. And so we have an entrance that we're using along the side, Church Street, obviously that serves the neighborhood in this area and the parking lot. The one in the front serves the Main Street, acts also as the ceremonial entrance, but that's also the entrance that's used when the rest of the building is closed, folks need to get in, access the meeting room in the evening. And if that's the only part of the building that's open, we don't have the capability of getting folks into the handicap entrance, even if it was possible, code on, on one side, and then getting them into the secure part of the library.
So I understand that as an engineering legal requirement, but at this point in the project, it's like putting a carton of horse. You planned, you planned it this way, and, and the whole reasoning, okay, this is a nice entrance, we've got Church Street, and then all the other changes you're making now require that you do additional changes and make it more expensive. So I'm kind of wondering, is the whole project kind of out of scope a little bit more than...
No, we're not, we've always had, the project's always had handicap access on public Church Street.
Right. That was made, that was a big change. That was a big thing that we wanted and needed was handicap access instead of the way it is now coming from the back. And it's going to be a nice, big entrance on Church Street, like it is, but I'm just kind of confused now, at the eleventh hour, that now this additional changes have to be made at additional, additional cost, that...
We're, and the, the only change we're making is at the corner, and we're just responding to a Beta comment. It's not something that we're proposing. It's just, it's just the existing sidewalk to make the handicap accessible.
Replacing the corner of the sidewalk.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you, Beta, this is a group of owners out there, it just doesn't conform to bring sewer, water, all these changes, it's just the corner.
But my point is that we're, you know, people concerned that maybe the project's a little bit out of scope, a little bit too big, trying to bring it in, and now we're hearing, right here, right now, that we're doing so many changes that we're triggering another requirement that's going to cost extra money, and it's like, how do we get this point without getting, how do we get this point instead of knowing at the beginning that we're going to be here and so...
We absolutely knew it. We knew at the beginning that we would need to be full compliant.
But we didn't know until Beta said that we needed to do this.
No, 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 no. Apples and oranges here.
All right. The only, the only thing Beta brought up was the existing sidewalk, nothing to do with the project or the building.
This is essentially what we're talking about, it's a curb cut on the front sidewalk.
I'm talking about the entrance way with the zigzag around the...
That's always been part of the plan.
But it's been part of the plan for six, eight months, a year.
Figuring out where to put it exactly.
We, we're just trying to get the grades just right so we can avoid the handrail issue.
It's both an aesthetic issue to avoid the handrails. It's a comfort issue because a walkway that's less steep is easier to walk. It's a maintenance issue, you don't have to manage and paint and take care of all the railings and everything. And it's a cost issue because it's cheaper to put in the walks and it's quicker. So it, it works for a variety of reasons.
Thank you. I appreciate your insight.
Sure.
I think we're on the detailed outline, which is detailed discussion by both the planning board and the public. I think we were finishing up pedestrian traffic well, pretty much, I think, the last time, if I remember correctly.
Probably right.
And I think we're running out of time right now, we're in pedestrian traffic well, but if there's any further comment on that, I think, if I remember right, we heard about the entrance ways and where people are coming and...
Yeah, I think we just kind of talked about that, how we're getting in and out of the building.
Yeah, so I think we're there, unless any more comments on that. I would say the next item on the thing is a, I think it was one of my questions, is outside curb or book return. Do you have a, how do you return a book when the library is closed?
How did we end up with that, Phil?
Book return is actually on, here next to the door. So if you park along the street, or if you park in the parking lot, you can walk up, take the stairs up to this point, and then it drops exterior and drops into the building close to the office.
But I guess because we're not going one way, you can't do a curbside one. If you had a curbside book return, I'd give you a couple of spots for that, quite frankly. Because, you know, us old people just like to drop it right off the driver's side door, you know? I've seen it done in a lot of different places.
Is there, I can't remember, on, on the back of the building, up against the new parking lot, is there any access, there's an access door in the building. Is it there for staff or something?
The emergency exit, no entrance there.
Right, 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 I know. But is that something that staff can access? I, I just wondered if...
I think the town was ego-sold out of that stairwell.
But I think you may be asking if it's something in the rear of the building.
Where I'm getting is, could you put a book drop back by that door where a car could just pull into the parking lot and didn't have to try to find a parking place or anything? Could just idle for a minute, jump out in the parking lot, run and drop in the book drop, and it was near the door so a staff person from the inside can come out and access the book box, rather than now where you've got it, somebody's going to have to find a parking place, go around. Now, just looking for a, park the car and idle and drop it kind of thing.
Similar to Westboro Library.
Yeah, just something in the back. You could, anywhere in that part, you could even just park in a little for a second.
I think, I think you get into more trouble, it's kind of like a post office, with the, the drop-in box that wasn't thought up really well when they...
Well, I wasn't talking about driving around. I was talking about being able to just hop out of the car and run after the book drop and get back in the car, but then having to park...
I'm not sure this parking lot is conducive to going in and dropping books.
It's similar to Westboro, where, except it's on a police station, that was how it, where they have that amount of space and idle for a few minutes, it's a few feet as opposed to a lot.
Yeah, not a full parking space, just, you know, staff person, and they're going to drive it quick, so it's just a ball.
Any one members in the comments?
I don't really do have a response, but...
Yeah, I'm just trying to think.
Any members of the public have comments on, on book returns? Okay, I think we're ready to move on. Next one is parking, on-street, off-street, off-site. How's the negotiations going with the church not into the details of that? Is that still, you, you think that counts?
Uh, I'm not sure if anything happened in the last few weeks with that. That's, that's if the town managers do level, so I'm not sure where that rule stands.
That makes it, in my mind, a lot easier to deal with that, as opposed to all the questions I'm going to have to you about this back parking lot being able to accommodate additional uses, like, such as the auditorium use. Because as we know, everyone that went here tonight had a hard time finding a spot. If you had a hundred people in an auditorium across the street, and you said this was the parking for it, it doesn't work. That's my opinion. That's my opinion.
Yep, the question isn't requesting additional parking on the town spaces.
Yeah, the town owns four spots out here or whatever.
The amount of spaces that are...
And you're short twenty-something, or at least, yeah.
And, and there's, you know, there's an area, pointed out, this between thirty-five and forty on-street spaces in addition to the twenty-four...
Not, not that you can count on this project, the planning board rules.
Would you say that the narrative for the site, for the special permit, was between Hayden Row and Walcott Street, there's about forty on-street spaces?
And, and those are counted by every business that's, that's up and down the line. David, I mean...
Which is, that was the, the, the application itself did not, you know, request, you know, use of the existing shared parking area.
That was in our package, if I remember right. Wasn't that included?
It's, it's a consideration. It was just considered a consideration to provide information to the planning board that there's an existing on-street, you know, shared parking in the town, it's, so that's good. Should the discussion go in that direction? I provided that, that information, just as a, you know, what if? If, if the planning board, again, their, their request was determining parking requirements based on his own, Beta had some comments on place of assembly versus museum. The narrative was requesting rental spaces. The application requested from the planning board that those nineteen spaces met with seven behind Town Hall, town-owned spaces, and the spaces between Hayden Row, Walcott Street, Church Street, Broad Street Park.
So it looks like ten on-street parking, but nine here, and we've got twenty-three on-site, twenty-one on-site.
Five rules allow you to count the ones in front of your spot. You don't get any on Church Street because it's not one-way. You get, you get the four or five on Main Street, and that's about it. I mean, and, and to, to count the ones that are behind here, I've never seen those four, unless I come at some odd hour of day, there's usually a town, a car with a town seal and one or two of them. One of them's a handicap spot. You know, I, maybe, I don't wanna end this today on, on, on parking, but I think the town has to do something to create the more parking, and, you know, the church is a viable one, in my opinion, is, is one that has a shared parking that is in a convenient area that, you know, you could, you could go to. I'm personally, I'm not terribly worried about parking for the library, and maybe I could be, like, we're better off than we were on the library uses, but the auditorium uses, which I can see is a value, you know, is gonna be very popular.
Is that a hundred seat? What's the maximum capacity?
I mean, what?
What's it?
A hundred and ten.
Hundred and seven, thirteen.
Um, are you, in your cat parking calculations, counting the spaces around the common at all? Because there's quite a bit of...
It would be, but I'm not far enough.
That's not far. I mean, that's like a block up. I mean, there, there's one, what, one building between the library and the common, and you've got a lot of spaces around the common. And honestly, I've always thought that on that marathon wayside, if you changed those to diagonal, you could get quite a few more. I mean, I don't think walking's...
Well, that's what, that's what we were thinking. It really wasn't a big issue because we've got, we've got the library there now. We're, we're creating a parking lot that's going from three or four spaces to a uniform twenty-four spaces. So again, quite a bit there. And, and the spaces, whether it's in front of the library or at the common, people are gonna find a spot on Main Street if they really need to get to the library, just as they do today.
But in fairness, you've got businesses that are trying to operate that.
They're operating today.
I understand, but it's, you know, with, the, the conditions to make it so it wouldn't be intractable for me is, is you're gonna have to condition it that you're not doing it during a school function or during the school day, because the common ones are...
The commons packed.
Is copped. There, there is not a, there's not a place to park.
For evening, evening hours.
But basically, I'm, I'm talking about spending a lot of time writing a list of, of rules as to when you can use the auditorium. Not on a day of selectmen's meeting, not on a day of planning board meeting, not on a ZBA meeting.
But the bulk, the bulk of that is gonna be like a children's story hour or something that happens during the day, today, and people find a way to do it when there's no parking lot at all at the, at the library.
Yeah, but you don't have a hundred seat place today. I mean, you've, you've got, you've got a, a building that we've said, you know, if you build it, they're gonna come for the rest of the library. I mean, I've heard that, and, and I truly believe that. And, you know, and our parking requirements only require you to provide half the number of parking spots that all the calculations say you're gonna need. So we're giving you half, quite frankly, because that's what, what the bylaw says. I mean, we need more shared parking. I mean, you're gonna say, well, you know, we're gonna park at the church wall. Maybe the church will put up the, the, the Hopkinton Drug Sign that says you can't park there if you're, if you're going to Yoder Beach. You know, you can't park there if you're going to the library. You know?
I think having a hundred, I think it's definitely making a ask, it's for the assembly area, changes the, of the discussion more than just the library. It's like water, it's, it's, it's banned, it's not allowed. Will they find a place to park eventually? But I wanna know something about, or half of that action, or, or, I don't know. It's just something, I think it's just a question, if you guys have some degree, but it doesn't sound like it.
I, I'm just wondering if, in the time that's gonna be involved, the library to get built, and then the decommissioning of Central School, and their rule, if it's not next door, but it's in the same neighborhood, that would potentially open up parking, a larger parking lot in back, which, I think, is not real nearby, but it is within, you know, and then the library's not gonna happen tomorrow.
No, this library will be there well before Central School's...
Yeah.
I mean, it's, and I'll tell you, Phil, very few people would wanna park behind Central School and walk all the way up there. I mean, you've got a better shot of, of turning down Church Street. Whoops, this parking lot is full, and I'll pull into the, into the, into, into Catholic Church parking lot.
Well, this board permitted ZOs at Fifteen Main to get some of their parking covered in Colwell's parking lot, and nobody ever dreamed that someone knew they were gonna park at Colwell's in order to go to Fifteen Main. But that was in the shared parking agreement.
And probably nobody did, and that's kind of the...
Yeah, but it, it was on paper. I, I'm just thinking longer range, some of this may sort itself out when the different...
I, I agree. And I think a, a library is different than a restaurant. People, people come to the library because they haven't used, need to get their, if they're going out to eat and the parking lot's full, they're gonna go to the next restaurant, but they're not gonna go to the next library.
Which, which, are you gonna put the, the guy out, the, the Thai put guy out of business with that discussion? I mean, no.
In fact, don't give him more business.
In fact, when, when we closed the library at five o'clock, I'm sure some of his customers are gonna park in our parking lot.
Unless, unless you have the auditorium board.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Scott has a good point, if I may. I go to the library all the time, and, and I do go to other places when I come to the library, and, you know, sometimes I'll go to one place or another, get food, and I am going to one, more than one place. So Scott's point that it's gonna increase business, the more people are coming downtown, which is the whole idea of it, and I think it's a very good one, very valid. We are taking a risk, there could be a perfect storm, it could be Stephen King speaking at the library, it could be a big discussion, selectmen, it could be a maintenance meeting, that's, you know, and parking is, is a problem, and, you know, it's something we need to address, I repent very much, but I don't know how we can address it in this discussion because there is no answer. There's no physical answer.
There are answers.
Okay.
Make the deal with the church.
That's in process, and we don't, we don't have that in hand.
Well, we're not done with the hearings yet either. I mean, that's, that's the discussion, is, you know, it's time to go make, make a deal. Make a deal with bills. You know, make a deal where it's practical, where we're gonna provide it. People won't come to the library if they gotta walk three blocks in the rain to come to something either.
What about Colwell's parking lot? Mr. Chair?
I think, I understand the rules and regulations, because I can open the lot. Claire, you make this very good point. We have ample parking for this library, within adequate and not unreasonable walking distance around the common, everywhere on the, if, if in fact you had Stephen King here, if you have a public hearing here, people have to walk a little further. Actually, there'd be something happening in town, but that's... I don't think you would ever have a parking problem with what we're doing, whether we have an agreement with the church or not. That aside, we are actually talking with CrossPoint to also see if we can work in agreement with that. Will, okay, having a piece of paper that says, hey, we have a shared parking agreement, be helpful to the board, it sounds like it, park, give them a park down there, go to CBS, go to the Panthai, and then go to the library, probably. So, anyway, we are working on that as well.
Well, you know, one of the conditions that I could see is if you had a shared parking park with some other entity, that if you're advertising something for the auditorium use, that you say the overflow parking is at wherever. And, and, you know, that tells people where they should go to park, but, you know, Hopkinton is a, a culture of driving a car. I mean, every family here probably has at least two. I mean, we, we don't walk anywhere as much as we should, but we just don't, and we don't have accommodations for it. And, and our bylaw already gives you fifty percent. I mean, that's, that's, that, that's the fudge factor that's in the bylaw already. And, you know, we're gonna be imposing on all the neighborhoods around this area. And, and the streets aren't set up for parking of that density, as we heard the last time. I mean, Church Street can't handle two-way traffic and parking on both sides.
Right.
It's, you know, it's, it's, it's not even like some of the Boston streets, that at least you can kinda park on it and you can drive two ways.
But you, if you, if you think about it, though, it's, kinda, you're kinda dwelling on the negative, if you think about the positive, this project should bring an extra twenty-four spaces downtown, that no other project in downtown can do. So that, that, I think that's positive.
Is the discussion with church involved in free parking or any kind of remuneration from the town for renting spaces, or is it simply asking the goodness of their heart?
For which one?
For the church, the Catholic Church, St. John's. Discussion about shared...
I don't know, I imagine it needs some...
Because there's also, there's also the Korean church across the street, which has been smaller, but it perhaps looks like a lot, and you took a little here, a little there, you know, and if there were some incentive for...
That's, that's a good example. I mean, that's, that's a very crowded place. I know it's on a Sunday, but...
Yeah.
They find a way to attend men's.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying another resource to pick up some parking spaces. If you're in con, if you're in discussions with St. John's, maybe there could be some willingness on certain nights, not the nights they're holding services, but, you know, I think we're gonna have to just try to pick up parking here, there, and the other, not gonna get it all in one, well, maybe with St. John's, but...
St. John's has a lot.
May not get it all in one, one place.
The Korean church, I think, has not been...
That's smaller.
No, not the, the smallest, they just don't encourage any non-use or the use...
Right.
Anyway.
They don't.
And it's, you know, it's kinda like the Hopkinton Drug Sign at this point.
But if you, if you look at strict interpretation of the bylaw, we, we need to pick up eleven or twelve spaces. If we can only count four in the front, and our twenty-four, that's twenty-eight, and we need thirty-nine?
I think we're asking for nineteen.
According to my calculation, you need twenty-four.
I think that was based on...
After, after using the spaces on the street and the parking lot?
There's twenty in the parking lots, it's three in the front. And you need nine, ninety-four divided by two is forty-seven, subtract out twenty-three, gives you twenty-four.
Yeah, there's a little difference over there.
Well, yeah, there's a little difference depending on the ninety-four.
It's between nineteen and forty, somewhere.
We'll get, we'll, we'll, the nineteen to twenty-four, for, for today. Why don't we leave it as a kind of an action item, we'll come back to this one with better solutions.
I, I just want to add one thing about Central School. When that gets decommissioned, we can pick up quite a few parking spaces just in that aisle on the south side, and assuming that whatever repurposing happens with that building, then the parking could be reconfigured, it might all go in the back, it wouldn't need that, that playground that's in the back anymore. So, you know, maybe you could, you know, kinda cobble something together for the short term, with, there could be, you know, a very viable long-term solution, expanding around the common and the school. It's, it was...
It's a different, you never know what that, what that use is gonna be too. We haven't figured that out yet, Claire.
No, that's correct, except if you just use that building, all that area in back where the playground is now probably wouldn't need a school use, and you could reconfigure, you could do all parking back there for maybe the building use and have some, you know, I'm just saying, that's opening up a good-sized chunk of land, which is a straight shot up the common walkway...
I agree.
And you're at the corner. It's really not unusual, an unusual distance to go from the corner to Central School up the common. I'm just saying, it may need to get followed in short-term and long-term pieces, if there's light at the end of the tunnel, you know, and it's kick the can down the road, but if there was some viable alternative a few years down.
Okay. To the chair.
Yep.
I have another question. Do we have the ability, I'm taking a big assumption, that by the time it opens, something will be addressed. Do we have the ability to say, until it's addressed, to limit the number of people within that function room? And say, until the time that additional parking is met, then that function room can only have X number of people?
We do that with restaurants seats, for example. Parking is limited, the restaurants are limited, so...
I would, I would see this, we go to a large number of seats, like, and just hours of operating, we go to meetings when we're not having a function at Town Hall or something like that.
But this might give you an ability, until something's locked up, to get approval, without having to have a complicated meeting, and then have, by the time the library is up and open, if the parking is addressed, then everything goes away.
We can always come back to a, then the site plan review and lift that restriction.
Right, yeah, but I was thinking the condition would be that we wouldn't wanna limit the spaces to fifty instead of a hundred, in case we wanted to invite Stephen King on a Sunday afternoon when there's plenty of parking.
Well, you wouldn't wanna violate the...
Right.
The board could approve something if they violate it.
Well, it, it's also hard to directly tie the number of people in the auditorium to the number of parking spaces. You might have, I mean, a, you know, parent with two or three kids, that's still only one parking space, so the numbers aren't really reflected.
The three kids and grandma and grandpa come in, you know, in separate cars. It's like they do it to soccer field.
But they all could come in one. I'm just saying, it doesn't correlate directly.
No, I don't think that's, and, and the library use and the meeting space use are probably not gonna coincide, not with, not with, by a hundred people in. Will, Will will take that back, sign, and work on it.
Work on parking. Can I come up with a, a way that we can get work, approve it? You know, any better alternative site that even currently used would have worked for me.
Okay.
For me.
All right.
Okay, I think we'll come, we'll come back to that one. Site lighting, lightful lighting, oh, by the way, public is, is... Oh, by the way, public is more than welcome to comment on all of these as we're going through the discussion. So if anyone had anything to talk about parking or any ideas on how to solve the problem, we're looking for problem solvers too, so, I mean, don't be shy.
Okay, I think we're onto site lighting.
Okay, site lighting, we've got only a couple of lights in the parking lot, I think, if I remember right.
We had two standalone lights in the back of the parking lot and two coming off the building to light the parking lot.
And Claire, did you look at foot candles? We always look to you on that one.
I thought we looked at that the other time, and it was okay.
Yeah, we did, we slid the photo methods.
Question on the flag pole.
Yeah, the design review committee or historic district committee had questions on the flag pole lighting.
Well, we wanted the flag.
Well, we have to have the flag, but, yeah.
Yeah, but in our last meeting, there was a discussion about the LED certification, ballast, uplighting, but the bylaw specifically allows the uplighting if it's for a flag.
Right. And I think we want to uplight the flag, and we'll have to deal with the lead issue.
Yeah.
What about lighting of the end of top of church, you know, where people will be accessing the auditorium, lighting the walkway, zigzag walkway?
Yeah, there'll be ballards, we hide the small ballards as you go out.
Okay. Are there kind of plans somewhere?
I think they're in the photo method.
They're in the photo method. They show in the photo method.
Can we pull that one out?
Are those ballards freestanding or are they in the wall, flat flushing the wall?
They're actually sitting in the plant bed next to the sidewalk.
In the bed?
Yes.
Okay, so a sidewalk plow is not going to take them out. Well, he's looking for that. Let me ask him about the sidewalk plow and the planting beds. So what happens when there's three feet of snow? A lit-up snowbank?
No.
What, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
We're wondering how the sidewalk lighting works when we've got a couple of feet of snow.
I guess I don't understand the question.
If it's a ballard and it's in the planting bed and it's underneath three feet of snow, is it gonna be just a glowing snowbank, or does that work?
Well, I mean, you certainly could clean out around them, because they're adjacent to the sidewalk, they're close to the sidewalk. They only stick up above a foot, so the idea is that they shed light strictly onto the footpath, so they're close by. And when you shovel by them, you'll have very little space between where your parking, where your walking space is and the light source itself. And the heat of the light will melt up that section of the snow.
So, you want me to speak to this plant?
Sure.
Basically, it's the, that's the baller that you see down there. And this, we show it, all this is the older, we had come all the way across just on the outside of the walkway, both sides.
Okay, so the ballers are only up in front, nothing along the Church Street side?
On the Church Street sidewalk, isn't it? There's a couple.
There's a couple, okay. How do you like the handicap path back to the parking lot from the Church Street entrance? I won't say handicap, the level?
Just walkway here?
Yes, that way, is that it?
I think these are, I didn't do this plant, so I'm speaking a little out of school.
We have, there's a covered porch right here, that has lights in it that light up this area. There's step lights in the steps themselves. And then there is lighting built up underneath the canopy over here that shines down in this area. And then we have lights mounted on the building and then on poles on the opposite side.
While you're up there, none of the light spills over across to your neighbors?
And we're reading zero all the way around, and these are all shielded.
And what's the highest level of parking lot?
I'm asking Claire's questions.
The highest is probably right in between these two fixtures, which are mounted on the wall, right about three and a half. Right in there. But this is five point six right into this, kind of a hotspot. It's a function of really trying to keep these things low. If we jack these things up a lot higher, we can make the lights a lot even, a lot more even. But even though they're shielded, you may still be able to see the light source from here, from your house. And we're trying to keep that lower. And the only other real solution is to add a lot more lights in order to try to even that out. We had a discussion with the design review board and went back to our engineers, discussed it. And those are really what the options are, get a lot higher or add a lot more fixtures to even it out.
But those don't...
We don't want them higher. Do we meet the standards?
The standard is zero with a lot, I think.
No, no, the standard is very uniformity.
Yeah, 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 it's one to fifteen is the max. So, yeah, five point six is not, you know, it's a little bit bright, but right at the door, you know.
Still within the standard.
And they go out after hours, right?
You ready to talk about that next?
Oh, go ahead. Mike Brown, Six Haight Row. What is the height of the light sources on the lights on the building and the ones in the parking lot?
They will set it about ten.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Walker, Eight Haight Row. What is the schedule for the lights to go off?
That's what we're gonna talk about right now. Great question. Lead us right into it. Typically, we turn the lights off for business, what, a half an hour to an hour after closing, to allow employees to get out in a safe manner. Then what, a half an hour or an hour, right?
Yeah, but, yeah.
It's in that range.
It's reasonable. The latest we stay open is eight o'clock on that?
Yeah.
And then if you had a special event in the auditorium, I guess you change the lights for that day.
We have to change.
Yeah, program that day. But maybe not after, I don't know.
Eleven?
Yeah, or something like that, I don't know. Well, if you had a ten o'clock meeting here, you know, if the planning board used that nice auditorium, it would be better than this meeting room.
But you park here.
You know, we'd be out of here by eleven.
To me, that's the maximum.
Feels right.
Any comments?
Will, whatever you feel is reasonable in this thing, I don't think the project really cares.
So, Mr. Chair, would you put restrictions then on the meeting times they could use that auditorium as part of your conditions?
We sometimes have put operating restrictions on businesses, but very rarely.
Very rarely. I don't, I can't think of any. The bylaw has some for restaurants, but board decisions, I can't think of any. Dumpster.
Dumpster, I'm saying, we're tougher on. I mean, I think there's meeting room, I mean, the library itself isn't gonna be open too many really late evenings, because, you know, normally out of there, what, seven?
Three days a week, we're open until eight.
Until eight, so, you know, light will be off at nine on those days. If somebody had a meeting there, which, you know, I guess I would hope that they would have meetings there, because that's why we're building it. You know, meeting ending at ten, ten-thirty, everyone's out, and the lights are off by eleven. I would personally rather take it and just offer it up for the board members in a trial balloon. You know, the latest the lights are on are at eleven, period, and then an hour after the normal closing or end of the week. Yes, it's reasonable.
But I wouldn't want it so that they just leave the lights on till eleven every night to cover the bases. And those should only be on late if there's a late-night function, on all other occasions, they should go out as soon as they possibly can.
Now, you might leave the doorway lights for security, you know, like the porch lights, you know, keep the light on, you know, as opposed to... And I assume you have maybe something back on the back wall, or not the back wall, the wall for some kind of light that acts as a security aspect of it, or...
We don't have anything that's set on a motion detector at this point, no. They go on through the photo sensor, make it dark, and shut off by a time clock, which is just...
But you have like entrance light, building light for the building code, et cetera.
That's right.
Do you have any lights, I'm saying smaller ones, that work for the back of the parking lot or something like that, that act as a security light as opposed to a keeping somebody safe and not tripping? I mean, this is just to have enough lights that the police, when they're riding down Church Street, can see that somebody's putting graffiti on the back wall?
At this point, we do not, I mean, the idea is that the building would go dark at midnight. We're pursuing needed certification, and so we're trying to make the building as dark as we can at night. Unless there's a security concern, then we would have kind of a minimal...
I guess I don't care one way or the other, other than finding graffiti moving.
I'm really a little concerned if there's events, one-off events. If it has to be an annual intervention, turn the lights on, pass, let's say you set it so it's nine o'clock, because that's nights that the libraries... And then there's different events, who would be in charge of making sure that it stays on and it goes off by eleven o'clock? And I say it only because I'm very cognizant of what goes on at the Woodley Fields that go on during the events. And when it has to be done manually, people forget. And when they forget, you get phone calls. So I just would be consciously with the butters that, you know, lights are on, something happens, people forget, and those lights stay on and pass the time. So it's more, it's an operational question that would bound to creep up.
Well, I was thinking we'll take that as kind of an action item, figure out how the timing works, so we can see if there's a multiple shut-off timer that we could...
Yeah.
I would say Brent's idea is, would it have to be annual? Because we have events at the senior center, it would be very similar where it's a town building and there's someone in charge. We may not know who's in charge right now for Brent, so I think, but it's, Dave's face is in his hands, he's in charge.
When there's a, you know, like senior center, like you say, it goes off a half hour after employees are supposed to leave. There's a manual override if somebody's there late, you just press the buttons, and the lights will be on, so that they can leave. And then they can shut off a half hour after that. So, for late events, there's always gonna be a town employee in charge or closing, they'll, you know, clean up, and they'll shut the lights off, and it'll automatically go back to the automatic cycle. The only way there's a, it'll stay on overnight is if there's a mechanical malfunction.
Other public comment on lighting? Have you got enough to write the conditions on lighting? Okay. Nope, I see none, we're done with lighting, I think. Building design. Claire, what was the design review comments? I think we're...
Again, designer review kind of didn't really do too much with it, because this part of the store just took commission certificate, so they took the lead on this. And they did get their certificate approval on June eighteenth, or, and whatever that, that's the plan, that's going forward.
Planning board members have public comments on building design. I was kind of interested in the last collection. That's a, to me, is a little better than what...
Just a point of clarification, I just have one issue regarding the two lots and how the interpretation is of the setbacks. I don't know if this is relevant to the building design, or if there's another point in the...
We've got one called zoning compliance and combining lots coming up.
Okay.
Might be a little closer, but it's kind of leading into it. I mean, that's more of a where it's located on a lot. Usually we talk about aesthetics in kind of this area. I haven't seen great comments. Board is usually, lots of the applicant people pretty much free rein on that anyway. Okay, signage, and I think you talked a little bit about it, about even the old sign or whatever.
We want to leave the existing sign, go to the public or something.
So that's, that's no real changes?
No.
I have no comment on Church Street, that's your main issue.
Well, technically, the main is, we're not proposing any signage on it.
At this point, no. If you were interested, I was just adding something.
I think everyone's gonna know it's the library. It's a question of...
Or you could put something on, rather than a freestyle, you could put something on the wall.
Well, it'd be a plaque that says, "Book drop." Does that count?
Probably be a plaque and a piece of printed paper that says, "If you want to go to the event, go around the corner."
Put a little plaque on the wall with the date, with the date often, you know, I think you have the date that the church was built chiseled in the cornerstone. With the date of the addition on it.
Can we put this signage enough? Okay, next item up on the agenda is landscaping neighbor buffers and existing trees. I think we've heard, why don't you pull that one board up there?
Yeah, we spoke about it last time, but there's a full landscape plan which hasn't changed. Providing more trees and chugs than what's required under zoning. And the back fence is staying, putting a new side fence and supplementing it with trees. The main tree at the corner of Main Street and Church, is the signature on the bottom left. That's, we're staying, not only staying, but we moved all utilities and disturbance away from that area. And then those two, there's two street trees on Main Street which are shown, that are existing. One in the back, maybe go to parking lot.
So you're playing four new big ones along the southern boundary.
One on the entrance, yeah.
Did you say that there's a fence along those, this way?
On the back, there's a fence, a six-foot fence. And along the side, there's no fence, and we're putting the fence in.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Sue Hadley, Four Haight Row. At the last meeting, there was discussion about adding some screening along the fence, along our property line, which is the section of, that's the addition before, yes. So it is, we are using our existing fence, it's a six-foot fence, and we're losing all of the trees and vegetation from our viewpoint. And at the last meeting, we talked about exploring other options, and I'm wondering if there's been progress on that.
These plants, at this point, are arborite, is that right? They're showing up, and they're gonna max out at about six feet tall. Am I have that right? Because the fence that we're looking at here is about six feet. If we continued these along, I don't know that it'd really get much of a benefit. And we're concerned about adding anything larger in this area that may drop leaves or branches, anything on the skylight that we have here in the rear. But we certainly could look at doing some smaller plants there. I'm not sure how much they would poke up above your fence.
I think the whole point was to add greenery. You've taken down all of the trees, all of the, all of the vegetation. So what we'd be looking at is our six-foot wooden fence and then the building. So couldn't you do some taller evergreens? If something was planted that was above the height of the fence, that that would get plenty of light in order to grow. I know there are very tall arborites, and those are evergreens, and do not drop leaves, don't have huge... don't have huge branches. I just would really, really like to request some sort of greenery to soften the impact.
I don't, I don't see why we couldn't do that. Get a plant that can grow up above the, above the stockade fence.
Yes.
But we can't, we can't add something that spreads, it would have to be kind of column-type shape.
That'd be fun, yeah.
There are junipers that grow very, you know, like, pointy and tall and thin, and they keep that narrow shape, and there are, you know, our, our variety varieties that grow much taller than that.
Yeah, I think there's, there's some that can grow about tall at six feet.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, I know you guys have tried really hard to mitigate the impact, and, you know, to some extent, you can't get the blood out of the stone. The house is here and the library is there, but, you know, screening for light and sound is, is one real important mitigation for the neighbors.
I don't see why we can't take that as an action, see if we can get something to go down along through that property line.
Yeah.
Yeah. Windows on that, on that eastern, that area? Is there windows or is that a solid?
No, we do have windows along that side. They're rather narrow, and they're a little, they're a little smaller. And actually, up on the second floor, the, the sills are actually quite high to kind of keep folks from looking out onto the, so we can bring natural light into the building on the upper floor. It'd also provide some privacy from the folks that would have a vantage point to look down into the neighbors' yards.
And I did ask at the last meeting, I know, about some of those windows and skylights, and I think you assured us that there was some kind of railing or fencing or something around that prevent, would prevent someone, a child, from walking on those?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, is it a pretty good impediment to someone getting on the window and jumping up and down on it?
Yes.
If that happens?
Like any other fence, is it climbable? Sure, but I think-
But it's, it's a barrier.
It's a, it's a definite deterrent.
Yeah.
And we're looking at something that's above three and a half feet tall.
Okay, okay.
Just for clarity through the, uh, just for, I think we have consensus that, do we have consensus? I think that we want to ask for the higher ever B-Day or other solutions, and that, that is our preference. I think, do we have agreement? I think, I'm very much for that, and I think that, I don't want us to lose that point.
Why don't, why don't we leave it as an action item for them? We'll stop here right up now because we are at our fortune hour, so that we can turn the lights off in the back parking lot.
Mr. Chairman, I will have more comments about the landscaping design in the next meeting.
Okay, we, we will, we will not say that that is closed at this point, and we'll bring it up fresh at, at the next meeting, we'll start with that.
Great.
And we will get to your questions about lot sizes and stuff, I assure you. Okay. Elaine?
Oh, what? Is there any way that we could get those comments to the design team?
Why don't I, why don't we get together?
Why don't you guys can meet together?
Talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, work, work with the abutters if you can.
Sir, could you just confirm when the next meeting is?
We're gonna do that just now. Elaine?
The September twenty-eighth is the next meeting.
What time do you want us?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen. So we can fit the next time in. So we're talking, looking for a motion to continue the public hearing to eight fifteen on-
Twenty-eighth of September.
Twenty-eighth of September, Sunday. Moving second for the discussion, seeing how to vote. Aye. And then the closing, we'll talk about the carries.
Elaine, Elaine, I will not be at that meeting, but I don't think I'd give any of these library hearings. So I think I'm okay.
We'll vote, we'll vote that night.
Okay, we've got a few items left to do. The zoning advisory committee, we have another volunteer, Brian Brown. Okay, Brian, but- He's got any background on Brian?
No.
This volunteer.
She needs her floor.
Yes, and Scott, too.
Just make sure she don't show up, nobody's there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Look for a motion to appoint Brian Brown as a member of the large zoning advisory committee.
Second.
Moving seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries.
Also, since the, the agenda was done, Anne Beauchamp, you have to resign from that.
I got this right here, is the next, I'd like to accept the resignation of Anne Beauchamp. She decided that her time is, needs to go elsewhere, so she hasn't, hasn't been to any meetings, but she was ordered to resign, so maybe it's smarter than the rest. No. Anyway, I'm just kidding. But anyway, motion to accept the resignation of Anne Beauchamp. So, moving seconded, ready for a vote? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Okay, now we're on approval of minutes.
We just started.
Approval of minutes for the tenth of August. Any comments to the tenth of August?
Hold on.
No. If not, look for a motion to accept the minutes of the tenth of August.
Someone seconded.
Moving seconded, further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Approving the minutes for the twenty-fourth of August. Any comments?
I have one comment.
Okay.
Let's have my place again. Oh, never mind, it's minor.
You okay, Frank?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's minor.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the twenty-fourth of August. Someone seconded, moving seconded, further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone abstaining or vote no or abstaining, okay, motion minutes are approved. Now we're here. Board member work. We're trying to work on the master plan for next meeting, so you're supposed to be working on your goals and stuff. I'm not sure we're gonna have enough time in the agenda, because we already got a couple of public hearings continued, that we're gonna be able to handle all of them. But at least some of you, us, maybe that get theirs done, we'll start talking about those, and we might let somebody slip, say, a little bit behind, but we're best.
Do you want us to actually do the wordsmithing or just make the points, the comments about things to be changed or included, and whoever's been doing the writing is probably Elaine, and then-
Rough draft is fine.
Yeah, I mean, whatever you have time to do, but I think the important thing is the, the goal.
Points, yeah, the point is to be included.
And, and, and a hard, hard look at all the words that are in that chapter, too.
Is that going on?
Yeah. Okay. Next thing is CPC is accepting projects for funding for two thousand and seventeen fiscal year. For those that are historical or open space, the thirteenth of October is the last date to submit a project. So that cycle is starting up. CPC is having a meeting this Thursday, I believe. It's not gonna be a really exciting meeting because we have no projects to look at in front of us at this point, but-
Would that be an appropriate time if there were questions to be raised about funding a project that's just been funded in this previous year?
Sure.
If there were discussions for amending things or something?
Talk to Eric Nickett.
Yeah, okay, it's Thursday night.
I think it's Thursday night.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah. And I think Zach is meeting tomorrow night at seven.
Thank you for the plug.
And hopefully your new Brian Brown will get sworn in tomorrow.
That would be good.
If we did, we did appoint him. And I think your first order of business is to appoint a chairman, and then just the hearing, public hearing date, right?
That's correct.
So it's gonna be a fun first meeting, I guess.
Always. All the meetings are fun, they've, they've had great chairman in the past.
Present company, our boss.
Present company, including.
Good. Okay, and other than that, I think our next meeting in September is gonna be fairly full.
Chairman, before that one point on this Eagle Scout, is it Matthew?
Oh, yes. Yes. Looks like he's looking for publicity.
Hiker, yes.
Yes, Hiker. That's one of our, that's one of our open space subdivisions that he basically reconditioned the trail on.
Right, for his Eagle project.
I'll have Franklin.
Cross Street somewhere.
Franklin and Cross.
But it's, it's on Franklin after it intersects Cross, I think.
Yeah, the side.
If you keep going, Cross Street crosses it, Brook Hall is, and then you go down, it's still on Franklin, I think.
Just before Brook Hall.
Right, well, you're back at Brook Hall. No, if you're going, it-
On Franklin.
First you pass Liberty Mutual on your left, and then Cross Street crosses, and Brook Hall is down on Cross Street, and then you continue on Franklin, it would be, I believe, on your left. It backs up to the, the back of the Brook Hall.
The north side of it.
That might be a pretty good trail, but to try once the leaves, start to turn.
There are sections of it that are right up into somebody's yard, it's just a little awkward. Darn, I had a date.
What?
Darn, I had a date.
Oh, okay. So we got that, let's see, any other, any other committees? How's open space going, everything?
Open space, we didn't have a meeting this month because we had nothing to do.
Okay. And, anyway, we're looking for projects to fund, potentially. So, anyway, anyone else have anything else? Let's get out of here with five minutes to spare for a change. Look for a motion to adjourn. Elaine, I got everything covered?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded, I think we're ready for the vote. All those in favor of adjourned, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.